Good afternoon. Welcome to this debate among Republican candidates for the Utah State Board of Education in District Four, which includes Davis County, North Salt Lake, Farmington, and Bountiful. I'm Jay Evenson, opinion writer for the Deseret News, and I will be your moderator this afternoon. I'd first like to recognize our sponsors, who are the Hinckley Institute of Politics, KSL and the Deseret News, the United Way of Salt Lake and Utah PTA, and the Sutherland Institute, and the Utah Association of Charter Tools. We have six candidates this afternoon. They are in alphabetical order: Sam Bracken, Drew Chamberlain, Melanie Mortensen, Ben Sorensen, Brady Tracy, and LeAnn Wood. Our goal today is to provide a platform to help delegates and voters to make informed decisions as this important election process continues. Because of the large number of candidates this afternoon, this debate will run 90 minutes. The rules are simple. Each candidate will be given time for a 60-second opening statement. For the first 45 minutes or so, I will pose questions to the candidates. Each will be given a one minute to answer. We have a timekeeper who will remind us of time remaining and make sure that we're on track. At the end of 45 minutes or so, I will begin asking questions posed by you, the viewers. Please be thinking of these questions as we go along and post them to the chat on YouTube. If I don't get any of your questions, I will continue asking questions myself. Prior to this debate, I met with the six candidates to review the rules, and we used a process involving numbers chosen randomly from a hat in order to determine the order in which candidates will respond. We will rotate this order as we proceed through the questions, so the person initially going second will be the first to respond to the second question and so on. The order that we came up with is number one, Drew Chamberlain; number two, Brady Tracy; number three, Melanie Mortensen; number four, LeAnn Wood; number five, Sam Bracken; and number six, Ben Sorensen. We will now proceed with opening statements, beginning with Drew Chamberlain. Drew, you need to unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. Just let me say, I long for the simpler times. I remember a time when when parents liked sending their children to school, when teachers enjoyed conversation with parents, when children learned quickly and easily. And I don't know what happened, but a few years ago, all of that changed. And I want to go back to that simpler time. I think a lot of it had to do with this woke mentality that has invaded our schools. I would say no to CRT, no to social engineering, no to the LGBTQ agenda in our schools, and get back to basic education. And we need to do what we have done in the past very well in public education, to teach a basic education, reading, writing, and arithmetic, sciences, and physics. And if it's controversial, I would say just, we're not going to do it.
Thank you.
And I'm trying to save the public education system. My name is Drew Chamberlain.
Brady Tracy. Brady, you're up. You need to unmute. I think Brady may be having some problems. There were some problems before we got going. Let's move ahead to Melanie Mortensen. We can come back to Brady.
Sounds good. I am Melanie Mortensen. I'm running for state school board, District Four. I am a mom. I have kids currently in the public education system. I'm a former teacher. And I have both of those perspectives that I bring to the table, where I know what it's like to be in the trenches as a teacher. I've been in the classroom with my kids for over 20 years, so I know what's happening on the ground roots there. I am a huge advocate for parent choice, be able to determine what education looks like for each of our children at every stage of the way. I am a fierce protector of our student privacy. And I am an advocate for teachers in that I would like to reduce their workload. I'd like to take the extra responsibilities we've given them off their plates and let them do what they love. Also, I am a huge advocate for transparency. I'd like to make the USBE more accountable to the parents and easier to access. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Brady, we got you. It looks like we got you online again. Let's go to you next.
Hopefully this will last. I use a wireless internet that doesn't like storms. So, that being said, first off, I'm just going to make a bunch of campaign promises. I promise not to ignore people like somebody have done before me. Parents are first and foremost experts of their children. So if a parent has an issue with their child at school, call me day or night, and I'll be there to help you. Number two, I don't plan on being at the ivory tower much. I'm a farmer and gardener. So I like to get things done. So if I promise to visit the schools in my district to make sure they are following the USB rules and state laws. Three, while I'm at the schools, I'll check to see if there's inappropriate books that in the next month will be illegal. They're in school libraries. I'm not a book burner, so if present, I'll take them to the local public library. Fourth, I have a spine. While I'm at the ivory tower, I promise to work with other like-minded board members to get rid of our data mining programs that are ineffective and rob our kids of an education. And five, I want to have open communication with parents. I promise to hold a monthly town hall, even if one or 100 people show up.
Thank you, Brady. Thank you. LeAnn Wood.
Hi, I'm LeAnn Wood, and I am here as a parent. I've only ever been a parent, and that's how I've been involved throughout this, is being there for my five children. When my first child started school, there were a lot of struggles, and were not for a 30-year veteran teacher who was able to reach out and help me with some of those things that I didn't know as a first-time mom, he probably wouldn't be a successful adult today. And so I have five priorities that I'd like to focus on: their family engagement, making sure that our parents and our educators are partners in meeting the goals for our children, quality teachers, strong leadership, a positive school climate, and rigorous standards, which are all within the role of the state school board. So I look forward to serving and hoping that I can take that parent voice in there and make differences that will help our parents feel a part of the solution to do things better for our kids.
Thank you. Sam Bracken. You need to unmute.
I should know that. Thank you. I'm Sam Bracken, and it's nice to be with you all here. I've lived in Utah on and off for 25 years. I have four children. We live in Kaysville. My daughter is 16. She goes to Davis High School. And I have two grandchildren with one on the way. I'm a businessman. I've been in business for 35 years. I got my undergraduate degree to Jordan Institute of Technology, my master's degree at Brigham University. I have an executive coaching certification from Columbia. And these days, I do performance coaching and leadership coaching. One of the reasons that I want to run for school, that I'm running for the school board, is because the last two years have been disastrous, and they've harmed us, they've harmed our children, and it's been very, very difficult, and we're behind. And as I'm elected, I want to improve school safety, both for the teachers and for the kids', mental, physical safety, and emotional safety. I want to improve trust and transparency with the Board of Education. I want to get back to the basics of classical education. And I want to stop teacher overload, so they can spend more time with kids. And I want to work on local agendas instead of national agendas. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Ben Sorensen.
All right. Well, first of all, Jay, thank you for moderating this. And so my name's Ben Sorensen. My platform is built on a number of different items. However, the one thing that made me really get passionate about joining this race was looking at comparing us to the nation where people say, oh, Utah is doing so great. But then I happened to look at our school proficiency scores of reading and math proficiency, where in kindergarten it's at 65%, and once it gets to eighth grade, our goal is for 25% proficiency for eighth graders. To me, I look at that as a travesty, and it's something that needs to be improved. I can echo a number of items that have already been said, and as I'm passionate about all these things too, but the most thing that I'm passionate about is giving our children a, and being a father of five, much like LeAnn is a mother of five, I'm passionate about giving our kids a rich education that is going to enrich them and create a love of learning for their lifetime.
Thank you. All right, we're going to begin here. The first question is kind of a broad-picture question. Tell me your assessment of public education in Utah right now. Are we succeeding? Where do we need improvement? And how would you help bring about those improvements? We'll begin with Brady Tracy. Tracy, you need to unmute. There you go.
Last year, Utah reported that only 47% of its high school students, grades ninth through 12, were proficient in the language arts. Only 36 were proficient in science, and only three were proficient in math. When you focus on juniors and seniors, the number's even worse. So I want people and our leadership to explain to me how can we graduate nine out of 10 students when six of those nine cannot read, write, or do math at their grade level?
Thank you. Melanie Mortensen, you're next.
I think overall, we have fabulous teachers. We have a great system. Everybody's doing their best. I think from my conversations with teachers that they are overwhelmed. We've asked them to take on too much responsibility. We've implemented a bunch of social ideological programs that are asking too much of our teachers. We need to take those off of their plates and allow them to do what they love, allow them to do what they signed up for in the first place. I also think we need to better figure out parent-teacher involvement. There is nothing more successful for students than a parent-teacher combination. And I think we have more parents involved and more support for our teachers, and we can increase that learning success overall.
Thank you. LeAnn Wood.
So we know after two years that we've seen the loss of learning and the coming back in, so much turmoil within our children. So we really have to look at where do we focus? And we focus on those academic needs when we have 60% of our fourth graders who aren't reading and 63% of our eighth graders who aren't doing math. We need to focus on that, and then we do that by making sure that as we at a state board level, we focus on when we put down those role-making authority, we give teachers the freedom to teach and to focus on the children. And then we make sure that the combination between parents and teachers, that parents have the ability to speak and share their concerns, because when that partnership happens, we know that we'll have greater success. And so are we doing good things? Yes. But can we do better things? Absolutely.
Thank you. Sam Bracken. Okay.
I think we're good but need dramatic improvement, as far as my assessment, and some of the ways that we could improve our education system and processes to do, use innovation to decrease class sizes so that teachers can spend more individual time with students. Over the last, the data I was looking at recently has shown over the last 10 years, we've had decreases in math scores, and average eighth graders decreases in reading scores. We need to get back to the basics and improve those scores. We need more cooperation and communication with parents where they feel involved in the classroom, so they don't feel ostracized and alienated. And we need to support our teachers in innovative, clear ways that help them decrease their overall burden.
Thank you. Ben Sorensen.
So in my conversations, being the father of kids in public education, so I've had I've had some conversations with administrators where the curriculum just wasn't working. It just wasn't working. Many parents had voiced concerns about it, to which when we go and voice this to the administration, it turns into, well, we have a three-year contract that's pretty ironclad. We can't break it. I have a background in management consulting and procurement, and I know that if something's not working, it needs changed. So if this has to be an overhaul of the current companies that we are contracting with to get a better curriculum, I don't think the problem is in parents or in teachers. They're doing their job. We just need to give them the tools to be successful with what they've been given. And that's why I think a rigorous review of the current curriculum and contracts that we have is the best steps going forward.
Thank you. Drew Chamberlain.
Yeah, I think Utah Public Education is a train wreck. And it doesn't do us any good to sugarcoat the issues. We need to focus on good, basic education. We don't need to focus on social engineering and all of this other stuff that's caused all these problems. We just need to get rid of that. Focus on basic education. We need to get back to a time when teachers liked talking to parents, parents enjoyed teachers, and children liked to go to school.
Thank you. This next question has to do with something that was in the news just a few days ago. The state school board decided that after hours of discussion and development, it would not, after all, be providing local districts with guidance concerning gender identity questions regarding things such as restrooms, locker rooms, overnight trips, for example. They said such policies would be left up to local school districts. I want to know if you agree with this decision from the state school board, and please explain your answers. Let's begin now with Melanie Mortensen.
Thanks, Jay. I do not agree with this decision. I feel like it's the state board's job to step up and set the standard. I understand that as a state board, when they set the standard, it then requires them to follow up and hold the district accountable to that standard. But I think, again, that's their job. We need to be the ones drawing the hard line and holding it up for everyone else to follow. I think leaving it up to the districts can be messy, and in order to preserve Utah values and preserve the standards that we need to see in our state, the USBE needs to take that role. I feel like currently, by and large, there are too many that are too afraid of the consequences of making a stand, and that needs to change. We need to be the ones holding up those values, being that frontline filter, and enacting that change.
Thank you. LeAnn Wood.
Yeah, I actually agreed with the decision, because I think you always solve the problem, find the solution closest to the problem. And when we are dealing with these marginalized populations, we need to look at the situation that they're in. You might have a community that's very supportive and can help that child, or you might have a community that is worried about, you know, where they're going to be. And so if we can have parents and teachers and principals working together at a local solution for each of these situations, I think you're better off in the long run. You're more respectful to those populations, both that are in the masses and in those limited numbers. So I agree with the solution.
Thank you. Sam Bracken.
I believe the Board of Education wasted their time in such policies, because this doesn't even belong, these kinds of things don't belong in public education. They're just a distraction. We've seen this dip in performance in our academic our academic performance with our children, and we need to get back to the basics and just provide good teaching, good focus on things that are going to matter in the education of our children. This kind of stuff is just confuses and creates chaos that should not have even been discussed. There's far more greater important things that we could have been working on.
Thank you. Ben Sorensen.
So I personally believe that the the role of a school in a child's life should be particularly defined and very strictly defined. Anything out of the scope of that should be illegal. Reading, writing, arithmetic, these things are in scope. Anything that deals with anything in sexual nature or identity nature, or or anything of that matter should be strictly forbidden and should be explicitly stricken from our schools. These should not be things that are addressed. I think it puts more children at danger than it does help children by allowing different ideologies to be ingrained. These are ideologies that need to be ingrained by parents in their children. Parents should be the one teaching their children principles that they believe in.
Thank you. Drew Chamberlain.
Yeah, Jay, I don't I can't believe we wasted so much time on that policy. And and I think we should have taken a very hard stand early on in the process. Social engineering does not belong in schools. Schools are for teaching basic education. Let's get back to teaching the basics, and let's just ignore the social engineering part of it. Again, like everyone's saying here, leave it up to the parents. Our job is to teach that basic education. The three Rs: reading, writing, arithmetic. Let's do that and do that well.
Thank you. Brady Tracy.
Honestly, I think that it doesn't belong in the schools. It comes down to the teacher, not the teacher. It comes down to the parents and not the teachers. The teachers are not they're not therapists for our kids. They're not trained in psychology for our kids. The school, it doesn't belong there. The parents should be teaching that. It's literally a state law that says 53E2-301, recognizes the parents are the child's first teachers and are responsible for the education of their children. That includes identity.
All right, thank you. The next question has to do with what happened during the legislative session this year. State lawmakers injected themselves into schools and their decision-making in regard to the pandemic. Schools may now pivot to online learning only if the governor, the Senate President, the House Speaker, and the State Superintendent of Public Construction jointly approve. Do you agree with this new process? And please explain why. And I believe we begin with LeAnn on this one.
I think it's actually Melanie. But did she start? Okay, sorry. I didn't think she'd started a question yet, so. Yeah, no, I actually think that, like I keep going back and saying, that solutions should be found closest to the problem. And so if we have an individual school that's having a problem, I don't think that they should have to report to the Senate President, the superintendent. I think it should be local control, local issue. You know, if we have one school, especially in this pandemic situation, you know, our districts were so different as to what they were spacing, that that individual control would be way better than having to turn to, you know, for at a top level. So I always will go with local control first.
Thank you. Sam Bracken.
I agree that local control is where the focus needs to be. Any kind of optimized learning experience can be done with live learning, online blended learning. These kinds of things can be ferreted out at the local level and what's best for the students and the teachers. I think that there's fertile ground for innovation here to use technology, but use it in a way that enhances learning. But if you create all this legislation that requires all these rules, it's going to mess things up, and it's going to stifle creativity. And in the end, it's going to hurt our children.
Thank you. We go to Ben Sorensen.
I'm going to have to politely disagree with LeAnn and Sam. I think if this pandemic has taught us anything, it's that online learning is dangerous for kids. They need to be in an environment where they can interact with their peers, and they can have face-to-face interaction with their teachers. And I think leaving this in control of local school boards tends to of local schools tends to be more of a knee-jerk reaction to to problems instead of a thoughtful, well-thought-out approach of how exactly do we safeguard our children? In my opinion, being a father of children during the pandemic, I know for a fact that having kids at home, trying to get them focused to do online learning isn't necessarily the best thing. And I think that these things should absolutely have to come from the top, because those are the people that we're going to hold the most accountable for.
Thank you. Drew Chamberlain.
Yeah, I disagree with the legislature on this, but I can certainly understand their thinking. Utah Public Education is a mess. And they're trying to do their best to fix it. And they're probably the worst ones to do that. But seeing how we didn't do it at the local level and the state school board didn't do it, then the legislature felt that they need to step in. They're getting parents yelling at them to fix the problem too. It's our job to fix these problems, and we're not doing it. So if we don't do it, then you can expect the legislature to step in. And maybe even higher than that.
Thank you. Brady Tracy.
I agree with Drew. It should have been our jobs to do it first, and the local level, and at the state level, not the legislation. But because of inaction, they went ahead and did it. It's strange to me that our leaders are so ineffective and spineless and don't do anything for our children when they're supposed to be protecting our children. And essentially being guardians of our children, keeping the wolves away from the sheep. And they're not doing that. So on intensive purposes, all this data mining and crap has jumped through, and scores have dramatically gone down by kids, and it's their fault. That's it.
Thank you. Melanie Mortensen.
Thank you, Jay. So as to your question about having the legislature and superintendent and those involved in the decisions to enact mask mandates or online schools for our local schools, I think those decisions are best left to the district. Again, like has been mentioned, we have a variety of urban and rural issues, locations all across the state, and every district is going to be different regarding what they need or how that impacts their community. So those decisions need to be left to the district. Now, let me draw a distinction between this and the last question. Whether we like it or not, gender confusion is an issue in our schools. We have that happening right now. So as a school board, it's our responsibility to draw the policies, to write the guidelines by which the schools then can follow. And so I see these as two very different and distinct matters. I'm all in favor of local control, absolutely no mandates. And yet I know where the USB roles lie and what they are charged to do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Again, sticking with the legislature in the last session, lawmakers considered but didn't pass bills that would have required greater transparency of curricula and content in order to allow parents a greater say in what is being taught. Tell me your personal philosophy on these issues. What is the best way to involve parents in their children's education in the public school system? I believe we begin with Sam Bracken on this one.
I totally agree that we need greater transparency in what our children are being taught. That is an absolute must and certainty. And I think we start with giving the parents access to the actual content and curriculum. Secondly, we have greater involvement. We could create committees, PTA parental committees, where they review the content. Where they review the content and they make recommendations to the local school districts um. But involving parents being completely transparent, the Board of Board of Education needs to be completely transparent. Honesty is always the best policy, because when you're transparent, it builds trust. When you have trust, it builds confidence. And then and and in the end, that's gonna help our children.
Thank you, Ben Sorenson.
Yeah, so I just as I said in in my opening, um, you know, just. Speaking with my son's school, when they said, well, we have a contract that has, you know, three years left on it, we can't. We can't break it. This absolutely is one hundred percent incorrect. We need to be pushing proficiency levels in our children. We need to be, we need to have parental involvement in in the curriculum that's sourced and. And in how they can best be advocates for their children in the home. To enforce this learning, to to make sure that our kids are are getting the enriched education that they need. Um, and and that's really key here is to have this type of transparency.
Thank you. Drew Chamberlain.
Uh, yes, right now we do need transparency in. In education. And the teacher's gonna have to deal with that. But. We need to focus on why. They want the transparency. That's because the school system is definitely broken. Social engineering has invaded our school system. And is destroying it. The next thing that's gonna happen is the voucher. Land. Some kind of a voucher will be passed. You you think you think um. Transparency is a problem with teachers and public education. You wait and see what happens with vouchers. Because. People are gonna take their kids out of schools. Public education will will fail.
Thank you. Brady Tracy.
Well, I think the selection of education programs that we currently have. Um, were never. They're just, they don't work. And parents were never informed consent of these. They were never voted on. They were never agreed to. The district was went ahead and did it. Um. What I wanna do is 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 parents really wanted to put their trust in. The school boards and educators. To review these programs before they sign agreements to them. And our trust as parents has been replaced. And no review was done. And in your clay case, a solution is required, so. Let's do a review process. That where we have parents from the beginning to set education goals, establish standards to. Are accurate measure progress towards these goals and then implement. Implement an ongoing annual review of these programs and services.
Thank you. Melanie Mordens.
I'm actually really glad the transparency bill did not pass. Any teacher who's been teaching more than a year has their lesson plans already articulated. And any parent can come in and ask or send an email and say, hey, what are you teaching? Can you explain to me what's gonna happen and? Where your direction lies with this. The only time that I didn't have my lesson plans planned out was my first year, and that's when I was just. Struggling to stay above water and I had one week ahead of the kids and that's as far as I had. But even then, I was more than happy to talk to the parents about where we're going. And what this unit's gonna look like and the topics and the. Resources that I'm gonna use to cover those. So I think if we want greater transparency, we need to encourage communication. And I think having that communication increase between teachers and parents. Improves understanding. And when we come to the table with greater understanding, we can appreciate even our differences at that point. But because we have that understanding, because we have that communication, that's gonna be key. We don't need to have legislation to force our teachers to be transparent. Overwhelmingly, they are more than happy to do so.
Thank you. Leanne Wood.
Excuse me, so I. Uh, when you look at the bills that there were, there were, there were two, well, there are actually about four bills, but two of them were very different. One of them. Was very much teacher oriented, that they had to put their syllabus online nine months in advance. And I I I couldn't even wrap my head around about how that would even be possible. And how we are trying to meet the me- needs of individual students when we're asking them to to then if there's a change in the in what was taught, they had to email all the parents. But then there was another one that was actually about district control. Now, as a role of the state school board member, we we set standards. We don't set curriculum. That that's a local issue. And and so I actually appreciated the bill where it was saying districts would lay out a policy that says how are our parents going to see what curriculum is being. Uh, used. And I think Davis is a really good example of what they did with adjust their social studies curriculum. They emailed their parents, they made it aware. We got online, we got to walk through it. We had two weeks where we had access to that curriculum. We got to offer feedback and they impacted and changed what they were going to approve based on parent input. And I think if every district had a policy like that, I I don't think that's a problem. I think that helps parents be more involved.
Thank you. Sticking with the legislative theme, lawmakers are proposing a change to the Utah Constitution. In order to allow income income tax revenue to be spent on things other than public and higher education. In effect, this would open up education funds to the competitive process. By which all state programs compete for funding. Now, I should note that they've also passed measures ensuring that school funding keeps pace with inflation and growth. Do you agree or disagree that the state should no longer use income tax funds almost exclusively for education? We begin with Ben Sorenson.
I I think it really comes down to are the needs being met on the school level? Are we giving our kids the curriculum that they need? Um, before we change anything in the state constitution. We need to make sure that we're not, you know, robbing Peter to pay Paul. Um, so it it's it's not worth it to us to take those funds and allocate them elsewhere. If we're not meeting the needs of our education. Um, so bottom line is is. We need a full review of the curriculum. We need a full review of where we're at in terms of proficiency levels and how we can make improvements. Now, if that becomes changing, you know, the the private institutions that we get our curriculum from. And contracting with with other places to make sure that we're giving our kids what they need. Then then we have to do that. So my answer to that is. I'm not in favor of changing. Unless I see positive change in education.
Thank you, Drew Chamberlain.
Yeah, I absolutely disagree with that. Um, we don't need to change that. The way funds are allocated. All that is is an attempt to. To have education open, have access to a bigger pot. So they can get more money. And what we've learned in the past. Is that when you throw money at education, it does not improve teacher scores or student scores. I think public education has plenty of money now. We just built a school in Farmington, a high school in Farmington, cost fifty million dollars, fifty million dollars. You don't tell me they don't have enough money. I would like to see parent or I'd like to see teachers. Get more money because they really work. And I wanna see administrator salaries cut dramatically.
Thank you, Brady Tracy.
I agree with Drew where I believe administrators need to be cut. Um. You look at like, say, for example, the uh. USB, their staff. They pay twenty five million to just the state board and that goes to the staff. And I I think. There needs to be an audit of the entire school system before we start talking about making any changes to how much. Or how much little. Uh. The school system gets. It there just means to be an entire audit of the entire system. From the top down.
Thank you. Melanie Mordens.
I appreciate the adjustment for inflation and whatnot, but I think overall I am opposed to adjusting that the constitution. Um. For the next, over the next ten years, our education. Uh, population of students is supposed to increase by fifty six thousand. And when you add into the unpredictable. Uh. Downturns of the econ, excuse me, economy like we have had like in two thousand eight. And right now it's going up. It would benefit us more to be able to. Have a surplus set aside in case we have another economic downturn. Because we're only gonna have an increase in demands on that money. And so while I appreciate the lower interest rate that has passed this year as well as being able to. Provide for those with disabilities, I think we're gonna have too many hands in the pots if we keep on this direction. And we need to maintain uh. The balance and the stewardship that we have over those funds for the growth that we're going to see in education. Thank you.
Thank you, Leanne Wood.
That's interesting because this is the first year where social health and social services budget surpassed education. The needs there. And and that all comes from our general fund. So we know that there's some kind of structural imbalance going on, and so we we have to really look at. Um, you know, where where did it go? We got more education funding this year than we ever have before. I think it was about seven point three billion. So I I think it's a discussion that has to be had as the overall. Good of the state, but if if this is going to happen, if they really are, and and we know as we come into interim this year that this is this. Conversation is going to be there because of the concerns um with with what's going on with our health and social services budget. We have to look at, well, what promises can we make to education with that uniform school fund? You know, and it was start, I I I've been up at the Hill for six to ten years um lobbying for education. And when we finally did not have to beg for enrollment and growth this past year. It would it was nice. It was like, well, finally, we're gonna get the money. That our kids for the kids that have come, but I really think the discussion has to be given. What promises can we make to education before we make any changes to our constitution?
Thank you. Sam Bracken.
Yeah, I don't think any amendment is needed to to give people access to funds that are earmarked for education at this point. I I think we don't wanna rob the future of our children and their education. But I also think that we need to be more efficient with the funds that we have. And then we need to look at um better ways to provide optimized education. To do more paid for performance kinds of things, to follow more like collegiate models where they have. Um, they have ways of funding um academic learning uh that that are more progressive. Um, and but I I'm really concerned about about taking money away from education. Right now, if you look at the local communities, only a small percentage, like one one and a half to two percent. Money is spent on principals and school administrators. Um, um, m- most of the other stuff goes to teachers and operations. Um, I'm just concerned that we think that there's all this some. This great need to cut cut in our local communities. Maybe there's other where wait places to cut money. Um, at the administration level, at the state level, but I don't see it in the local level and I don't see it needing to be amended. Uh, I don't, I I disagree with the amendment.
Thank you. All right, according to my clock on the wall, we've reached about forty five minutes here, and so um. Let's start answering some questions from our viewing audience. These are being relayed to me via text and we we have quite a few. The first two that I have here are both along the same lines. They have to do with the teacher shortage. The first one is. How do we maintain a healthy number of teachers in our system? What would you do to help make sure we have enough teachers? And the second one, what do you believe is the root cause of Utah's teacher shortage? What can we do to solve the issue? Um, we begin with Drew Chamberlain on this.
Yeah, you know, that doesn't surprise me one bit that teachers aren't wanting to. Be involved in our education system. Right now, it's a mess. We gotta fix that. Teachers wanna be able to just teach. They want to. They they don't want mandates from. The school district, the local school district or the state school district. They don't wanna be involved in controversial subjects. They certainly don't wanna decide whether the boys are gonna be in the girls bathroom or so on. We need to go back to basic education. We need to get away from everything that's controversial. And then the teachers will come back just fine. We could teach, we could pay them a little bit more money. I think money's part of it. Although I think teachers probably make. Pretty good salary based on. On other. Parts of the economy. But um back to basics.
Thank you. Brady Tracy.
We need to go back to the basics. Um. If you have a retention rate. Of only fifty percent. In any work environment. That's considered a toxic work environment. Whether it stems from coworkers or whether it stems from the environment that they're in. And what they're forced to teach. That's up for debate. But. The way we can get teachers is to pay them more. And find quality teachers. And let's not have it cost a hundred grand in six years of education for them just to find out if they even want to be a teacher or not. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Melanie Mortensen.
I think um. Teachers generally. Join that because they love the subject. I know it was for me. I love my subject. I love installing it in the hearts and minds of my students. Um, I think what. What makes it work is a positive work environment that has been addressed. Um. I think uh we're going the right direction with our salaries and that they have been increased over the past few years, and I think we need to keep that trend going. But even if you have a low paying job, if your environment is positive and nurturing. Um, and you feel valued, you're gonna wanna stay because you love working there. When I taught, I had an amazing principal and he was very supportive and uh. And helped me all along the way. And I've heard so many horror stories from my delegates who are teachers. About admins who are negative or critical and and make it very difficult to wanna be there. And so I think we need to start there in making the work environment positive. I think we need to continue the trend with the salaries and um. And take the extras off their play, the extra responsibilities that they've been asked to do.
Thank you, Leanne Wood.
I I think there's two things, more respect and and less burden. And it in the legislative audit that was released this last spring, we saw that um stress and workload were the number two thing. Two first two things that were were causing the most stress for our teachers. And then and then finally pay was actually third. And I I think we see with most of our teachers, they know when they come in that 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 pay is is not going to be, you know. The same as it would be in another occupation, but because they come because they have a teacher heart. And so if we can, as a state level, we don't do much with their pay. That's that's a local level. Um, but we can make a difference on the burdens that we put on them. As we put forward and and write the rules. We can determine how much of the burden will be passed down, you know, what we mandated a state level, but but what goes down to the local level, but. But how much can we take off? Or if we look at programs that are coming in, you know, we can say, you know what, this this program is going to be too much for our teachers. We're not going to accept that program. And as we work with legislators, we can say, you know what, that bill is going to add a lot of burden to our teachers. Can you not do that? And that's where we can make a difference at the state.
Thank you. Sam Bracken.
So how do we get, how do we keep and get more teachers? Um, I think the first question, how do we keep more teachers is by making their job less difficult. We we think they're superheroes and they're not. They're just human beings and it's way too complex right now what they're having to deal with and. And part of that is helping to understand what winning looks like. They don't know what winning looks like anymore, you know, uh. It used to be just focus on the academics and and as kids do better, we do better. Um, and the better you, the more the more environment, the the more you can get clear in your environment. The better that people, um, teachers will feel like a valued member of a winning team making distinct contribution if they get support. We need to reduce class sizes. We need to, we need to be able to help them avoid burnout, give them more support that they need in in their own work life balance. Um, and and create a culture where people wanna teach again.
Thank you. Ben Sorenson.
So I I echo a lot of the sentiments that have have already been been said. Um. I I I think bottom line, it comes down to teacher retention comes down to. Incentives. Um. So there's definitely the pay incentive, there's the culture incentive. Uh, but for me, I I look at it as as working with with local school boards. Um, to create incentive programs for teachers who go above and beyond. Um. I, you know, I I work in the private sector where if I put in extra work, if I work harder, if I if I do put in the extra hours. I see that at the end of the year with with my with my bonus or or whatever. I I think that there are incentives that we can give to. To teachers. Um, outside of of, you know, money, but there are also other things that we can help to cur. Kind of create this culture where where teachers feel valued. And and they want to stay and they want to come teach in Utah.
Thank you. Our next question. Says, please tell us what you know about the Department of Justice. Agreement with Davis School District and what your thoughts are on it. I believe this is the. I believe this is the Department of Justice complaint about racial harassment in Davis School District. And we can, we begin with Brady Tracy.
That's a tough subject because my son, my stepson is biracial and I think it's comes boils down to what the kids are taught. And if they're, the programs that are teaching them are full of, what would you consider left-wing propaganda? And full of biracial and racial language that just confuses the kids. That should be something that would be allowed to the parents. So when you have a Department of Justice take over because something is happening in the system, then it should be a huge red flag to parents to wake up and say, hey, I don't like what my parent or my kids are learning and let's get the Department of Justice out of there and get the people that made these decisions in the first place held accountable.
Thank you. Melanie Mortensen.
The events that triggered the DOJ investigation were heartbreaking. And I wish I knew more details about them, but I think we could have prevented it snowballing by having conversations with those parents at the time of the incidents. Now that it's happened and that we are dealing with the after effects, there are certain hoops that we are required to jump through. As written in the agreement with the DOJ, they were allowed to investigate because we accept federal funds. And so if there's a way we could untangle ourselves from federal funds and just use our state funds and work with what we have, I think that would have been helpful in the get-go. But I am proud of how the Davis School District is handling it. It's a regrettable situation to begin with, but they're doing their best to take care of and follow through with the agreements that they've made with the DOJ.
Thank you. Leanne Wood.
Yeah, I would agree. I think that the complaints were there. I know that there have been some who said, you know, that Davis brought them in. And it was not that way. The complaints came. And then the Department of Justice did their research and found that those complaints were justified. And so now it's taking, going, moving through and trying to figure out, well, how do we make sure that those things don't happen again? And I've actually heard from some teachers that the training that they're getting, that they've appreciated, that there were things that they actually were not qualified in learning how to deal with. And even as we've looked at some further investigations that have come from some heartbreaking situations there in the in the district that some of our teachers didn't know how to handle bullying situations. They haven't learned how to move, they didn't come to deal with all of these personnel, you know, personal issues with these children. And so helping them be better qualified to deal with this, I think that will be one of the benefits. And if we can move through and get through and kind of check those boxes, maybe our district will be better off and hopefully other districts will learn some of the same things so that we don't, we're not replicating these issues throughout our state.
Thank you. Sam Bracken.
I don't think we should need the Department of Justice to come in at a local level and solve our problems. I think we are more than capable at our local and state levels to solve these problems. Bullying and these kinds of issues have been around for a long time and they're atrocious. They're terrible. But that, why would we need the federal government to come in and fix those kinds of problems? We have the resources here to solve those problems and to help support teachers and the kids that are getting bullied to give them support and the trauma that comes from that. I just don't, I think it's overreach from the federal government. And I think the way it was done really offended parents and caused chaos instead of clarity. This is not to say that any kind of abuse, bullying or otherwise, is ever acceptable or nor should be tolerated.
Thank you. Ben Sorenson.
Yeah, so I agree somewhat with what has been said. However, I I think the problem, it's a problem of, this is a symptom, not the sickness. The sickness is bullying in our schools. And the problem isn't so cut and dry as we need to build teacher awareness. We lose too many kids. We've lost too many kids to suicide from bullying or murders to bullying. The solution has to be based in in removing the child from that environment and putting them in a different school or just in in a different environment where if that becomes moving them into a different classroom or whatever, just somewhere where they can be successful and feel free that they can succeed.
Thank you. Drew Chamberlain.
Yeah, what's the Department of Justice doing in the Davis Education, Davis School District? You know, I don't know much about this decision. I'm learning about it right here. But is it about bullying? I mean, I don't know. From what I've seen in the news last couple of years, we're all being taught that we should be bullying. Aren't we being taught that we, we're not Americans anymore? We have these, all these little cliques now. We're being taught to be racist in America. And it's just so divisive. We need to come back together, agree on the things that we agree on. We don't need the DOJ in our education system. And we just need to get back to basics. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we've gotten a lot of questions from the public. I'm going to scroll down here and make sure that we ask as many of these as we can. Here's one. We are spending almost $7 billion on K-12 education. But student performance is worse than ever. What do you think? Why do you think that is? And what will you do about it? We begin with Melanie Mortensen.
So I am fascinated by that number because it is so incomprehensibly huge. And one of the projects I would like to take on on the board is to tackle the budget, to try and figure out whether it's a flow chart or a spreadsheet, where that money goes and what's happening to it. Because I think when we know what's actually happening, whether this large percentage is going to maintain schools or school buses and this section is going to teach your salaries, I think when we can see all right, how much actually gets to the classroom, we can figure out where the problems are. And by, again, it's all about communication and transparency. Once we figure out, once we have that communication, then we can plug those holes and we can figure out how we can improve the system. We can keep throwing money right and left like we've been doing for the past 20 years, but it's not helping anything. So we need to find where those, where that breakdown is, where those weak links are in the chain and be able to address them and we'll have a better understanding of how better to do that.
Thank you. Leanne Wood.
No, I'd like to see, if I had my dream, I'd have a moratorium on new laws, education laws for about two years and let teachers focus on what has happened. Sometimes I think we get legislator pet projects. That's kind of that below the line spending. And that's what has to be done. And they get it started and they kick it off and they get all the training and we spend all this time and effort. And then come January, they decide, well, that's not the next best thing. And so I would love it if we would say, okay, we're going to focus on our children's proficiency. And that's what we're going to do. And any money that's coming, it's not going to be the next best thing. It's going to be the thing to focus on our kids. And if we could free up that spending so that it is focused intensely on our math skills, our English language art skills, our science skills, and use that money more effectively. Because I think sometimes it is wasted. I think it's wasted on projects that whatever, whatever is the next best thing. And our teachers are spending too much time being trained on the next best thing instead of being able to focus on what they need to focus on.
Thank you. Sam Bracken.
So as I looked at the data, I just referred to it. Our education is not the worst ever. You know, our proficiency scores are significantly better than they were in the 1990s and 2000s, early 2000s, right? So we are making progress. With that said, what we need to do is we need to get more leverage out of the money that we spend by getting, narrow the focus on a few clear goals, not 39 strategic objectives. Find the actual leverage for learning and development. Make sure we're all in all the time, that the teachers are engaged, that the students are engaged, the parents are engaged. And then we have a process of accountability to improve performance. That's only going to come if you create a manageable improvement system that has more narrowed focus around academic credential and learning. The distractions waste money.
Thank you. Ben Sorenson.
So, and this coincides perfectly with what exactly I would be doing in, as one of my first projects for the Board of Education. I would be doing a full review of all the contracts for curriculum that we have put in place along with a full review of what the KPIs, the key performance indicators that we have set with those companies, with those firms. Why are our students, our children, not meeting and achieving these benchmarks that we have set for them? Proficiency in eighth grade is 25, our goal is at 25%. Our goal is the state. We are the administrators of the test. So when, just as Sam said, when our proficiency scores are up, that is because we are lowering the bar. We are lowering the bar of what proficiency is. We need to raise the bar and we need to enrich the education. And I propose we do that with a full contract review. And if we have to set out some RFPs to make sure that we're getting the best curriculum that's for our kids, I think we have to do anything and everything that we can do to make sure that we're meeting their needs.
Thank you. Drew Chamberlain.
Yeah, clearly, we're wasting our time and our money. Proficiency scores are down because we're not teaching proficiency. Our time is spent teaching social engineering skills. We don't need social engineering schools. We don't need social engineering in schools. We don't need any of that. We need basic education in our school system. We need to get back to the basic education and do away with the social engineering, the LGBTQ that's going on in schools, leave that up to the parents, the legislatures, and we just teach.
Thank you. Brady Tracy.
Well, I mentioned it earlier that we need to audit from the top down to understand where all the money is going. But I can guess that a lot of it goes into these third-party programs who offer nothing to our kids and are ineffective. Take, for example, in the Davis District, right on their own website, they say that it does not work. It'll take three years to find any balance with it. And then they happen to say the district is on the right track, even though it takes three years to work. Then they offer with Summit Learning, for example, and this is just, like I said, an example of a program that doesn't work. The Washington Post posted about how there is no solid evidence, research, support that even works. All the data they've gathered is from the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative. Like, why are we spending all our money on these programs that don't work?
Thank you. Next reader or viewer question, what is your definition of critical race theory? How will you work to enforce consequences for those to teach it? I believe we begin with Leanne Wood.
Last fall, I was asked what is, my position was on critical race theory. And at that time, I didn't have a position and I had to share that because I didn't know enough about it. So I spent the next 20 to 30 hours in the next two to three weeks speaking to people from all sides of the issue. Senators, representatives, teachers, parents, people who have worked in the equity field to come up. And what I realized is that this, it really is a lens by which you look through. And it's not a, it's not a 60-second question. But whether you look at it from one side, it's a philosophy that's teaching about that one race is better than another, that that there are oppressors and oppressed. And on the other side, it's a college-level curriculum that is teaching where race and law intersect. And so I think we have, I'm sorry, it's just not a 60-second question. We have to make sure that we have a rule in place. It passed, it was put into effect in August. And now we go through and see those things that have been ingrained in our curriculum for years, how we root those out.
Thank you. Sam Bracken.
So I believe that, much like Leanne, that critical race theory is a lens that teaches that teaches people how to view things. And it does divide instead of unite. It does create prejudice and bias that's not needed. And I believe that it's appropriate if it's taught in post-secondary education with a counter type. Here's one type, here's a counter type. You can learn, use Socratic method to find the common differences. And but kids that are being taught critical race theory, their brains aren't even developed yet. Your brain doesn't get developed until you're in your twenties, right? Early twenties. It's just too much. It's too much too soon and it has an agenda that needs to be removed completely from schools.
Thank you. Ben Sorenson.
So it really comes down to the bourgeoisie versus the proletariat. One side versus the other, the oppressed versus the oppressor. And that's really what critical race theory is about. It's about teaching one group, in this case minorities, of, you know, Latinos and African-Americans and LGBT and all those people that they are the oppressed. And there are oppressors. And so it's pitting these two groups against each other and telling these, telling the, you know, oppressors that they are oppressing the other group. It's not something that's going to unite us. It's not something that's going to pull in unity. It's going to make people feel like they're something that, they're a part of something bigger than themselves. In that, you know, we're all Americans, we're all human beings and we're all just doing the best that we can to make sure that we're providing for our families and that and that these kids are learning all that they can and having the best opportunities.
Thank you. Drew Chamberlain.
Yeah, CRT taught me last year that I was a racist. I didn't even know that till last year, you know, because my skin is lighter colored. Of course, that's ridiculous. CRT doesn't belong in society. And certainly CRT does not belong in our schools. Thanks.
Thank you. Brady Tracy.
CRT doesn't belong in our schools. It belongs to teachings of the parents. Take, for example, my biracial stepson. He came home one day, he was suspended from school. And in order for him to come back to school, he had to learn about unconscious bias and intersectionality through the lens of race. And he also had to learn about microaggressions and other things that do that. And since he's biracial, it confuses him. Is the white side of him supposed to be the oppressor and the black side, the oppressed? And as me and his mom is white, are we supposed to be the oppressors to him? It's very confusing to kids and it should not be in a school to teach that to our children. That is something a parent should teach.
Thank you. Melanie Mortensen.
I think we've got some great descriptions of what CRT is. And we do have a rule in place, policy from the USBE that eliminates it from being taught. However, I don't think the language is strong enough or clear enough. And so we need to amend that policy and include some clearer language that includes CRT, SEL, DEI, any other label that society wants to put on this neo-Marxism, it's new socialism, so that it is eliminated and our kids are stopped from being groomed from kindergarten. And it's a, it's a very, very divisive, as has been discussed already, divisive policy. And I think if we can get back to, excuse me, classical education, teaching unity, teaching teamwork. These are the values that are going to help us heal, that are going to help us to stop the increase of suicides, stop the increase of gender confusion, because those are all fruits of what CRT has brought about.
Thank you. All right, scrolling through here, what specific policies, rules or All right, scrolling through here, what what specific policies, rules or resolutions? Do you specifically support that the Utah State Board of Education has passed in the last year? We would begin with Sam.
Wow, that's a beautiful one. Um, I don't think I would support anything that they passed, I don't, I don't, I don't follow it that much, to be perfectly honest. Um I just know that the last two years have been a complete nightmare and that they didn't transit transition from. Live learning to online learning very well at all and it created a traumatic experience for our our kids. And our families said it drove division, whatever they did drove division between parents, teachers and students. It didn't unify anybody or anything. And um I'm really not concerned with what they did in the last year because what we need to do is we need to move forward. With clear goals, clear initiatives, clear kinds of things that where there's no, there's no way to misunderstand. What they're trying to accomplish in policy and recommendations.
Thank you. Ben Sorenson. You're uh you're muted, Ben.
Thank you, I was on a perfect record, okay. Um, so I I first of all, I agree with with um the transition to online learning being handled on the state level. And not on the local level. Um, second of all, I I love that they've expanded the scholarship for for children with special needs. That it extends to um their siblings to help help siblings be more involved in in their children, in children with special needs. Education, um I I love, love the fact that they um pass some legislation. Um that would help um make it so our mentally disabled students can be involved in the classroom with with peers of their own age. Those those are the ones that come come to the top of my head um from from the get go.
Thank you. Drew Chamberlain.
Yeah, you know, I don't know what they passed, so so I can't ask that question.
Okay. Brady Tracy.
It's hard to say what they passed because they make it extremely difficult to find out any kind of voting record or. What's being voted on unless you want to sit there and watch three hours at a time of video. Um, that being said. I am grateful that they did expand IEPs, but at the same time. The system as a whole, everything they did was just such crap-tacular that. It made very little difference overall.
Thank you. Melanie Mordenson.
So I second the ones that Ben mentioned, um the the special needs siblings and the inclusion of students with mental disabilities. I think those are fantastic progress in the direction that we need to go and we needed to clarify to go. Another thing I appreciated is um we passed some legislation that allowed funding for full day kindergarten. And while the demand on that is high and I don't think we got enough funding to meet the demand. Um I appreciate the board's efforts to clarify how that funding is to be used. And to clarify for those parents who don't want full day that they can opt out, some of that language was confusing and and they spent it. A great deal of effort trying to make sure that uh that that is clear and even repetitive, but still clear. And so I would rather be clear and repetitive than have any misconceptions or misunderstandings about where that funding goes or who gets to opt in, who gets to opt out. And the other thing uh that I love that they do, and I don't know many people know this, but there is a high school art contest held every year. And as part of this contest, the winners, they have at the local level, the winners get to go down to Springville Art Museum. And um the school board purchases pieces from that museum to decorate their building. And I think that's such a beautiful inclusion of students in the USB.
Thank you. Leanne Wood.
Oh, I think it's interesting because most of the things that have been talked about are actually legislative action that the board will now move into and create rules for. Um so if we look at what the work of the board um actually is and uh. Uh one of the things that that I I'm finding intriguing is is their portrait of a graduate. And what they want a K through twelve student to look like when it's when when it's been, when the student has been through the whole system. And and I love, you know, focus on the academics, digital citizenship, financial literacy. Um I'm I'm interested and there's a couple of areas there where they talk about um a more internal things that 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 kind of. I I'm wondering how they intend to track those and and that's one of the reasons why I'd like to be a part of this is is um. You know, how do you track that someone um can set goals or has respect or integrity and things like that? So so there's some some interesting things there. And and back on the full day kindergarten, I I have to just put a plug in because I was on the, I helped write the business case and the legislation for that. And I was the one who said, make sure that you tell parents how they don't have to be involved four different ways, so um. That 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 would be my, that that portrait of a graduate is is the one thing the board has done.
Thank you. Next question, you manage the largest state budget item, what experience do you have with finances? We begin with Ben Sorenson.
So I have a finance background and um I currently do manage uh management consulting in supply chain operations. Um I've helped multi-billion dollar companies um refine their spending and and drive out savings and increase. Increase revenues um while decreasing costs. The the driver for me on being put on, put in charge of anything budgetary would be. How can we garner the most value out of what we purchase while keeping our costs uh low and keeping our risks minimal? Um because if things aren't working, I I would, I want the, I want the flexibility to be able to pivot to to something that would work.
Thank you. Drew Chamberlain.
Yeah, I've owned my own business, um I'm certainly a father, a budget. Our family finances. But um. I'm pretty good at trying to find waste. Uh just just maybe an example, Jay and I were were neighbors in South Jordan. I was on the the board that contracted with lawn mowing. In that area, in the special service district. We cut our budget by about forty percent just by going out and finding people that could could bid on those projects. And I was the one that did that in that service district, so I know how to save money.
Thank you. Brady Tracy.
Well, I guess you could say I'm 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 poor. Um, I I have to manage my finances. Because I don't make a whole lot being a gardener and a farmer. Um I have five kids and a wife to take care of and so every little penny counts. And that's how I, it's no different from having five hundred dollars to five billion dollars. You gotta make every little bit count until the very end.
Thank you. Melanie Mordenson.
So I, going back to my budget project, I really want to dive into this and tackle it and I have the drive and the determination and the. Stick-to-itiveness to to tackle that because it's going to be a huge project. But I believe so firmly in transparency and I think that we need to involve the parents. Um in those decisions and and to have that openness. Um I believe in the concepts of fiscal responsibility, I think we need to be very, very careful about where that goes. Um evaluation, money spent wisely across the board. I think um new-fangled prog- programs aren't always good because they're new, we need to be, take a hard look at everything that we're incorporating. And I would love to have a a bi-monthly newsletter go out now to anybody who wants to sign up for it and say, hey. Going into the board meeting, here's what we're gonna discuss, here's some budget items. And then have a follow-up afterwards, we say, here's what happened and here's what I did as a result of your input.
Thank you. Leanne Wood.
So um honestly, as a parent, my my one area of finance has been managing my own family budget. You know, and making sure that all the ins and outs um equal each other by by the end of each month. Um I've spent a lot of time in on on the Kobe dot Utah dot gov, it's the compendium of of a budget. And and it's where you find out where every dollar has been spent and where it's going and where it's it's been spent in our in our state. And you can go there and you can see the education budget, you can see how it's broke down. And I think that's you, as you as you go through, as you sit through those um government, the legislative uh. Education appropriation meetings, you start to learn where the money goes and 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 maybe find those ways where you can and save and. And not waste it and focus it on the needs of our kids, most especially.
Thank you. Sam Bracken.
So I have an MBA from a a top-tier MBA school and for the last twenty years, I've run strategic business units all over the country. And uh I I am very familiar with budgets and how to maximize earnings, reduce cost and and increase performance, uh you know. And my specialty is building people as we beat budgets and and overcome objectives. The thing that I bring to the board is this ability, this incessant ability for us to be accountable for the money that we spend. To control cost and to, as we define success, work tirelessly to make sure we accomplish our objective. I don't know if there's that kind of responsibility there is in business with our with our education system. And there's a hard edge to it in business and I plan on bringing that um accountability to the Board of Education.
Thank you. Ben Sorenson. You're muted.
Sorry, I believe I already spoke, but if you'd like me to dive deeper into that, I I'm I'm happy to.
I've 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 worked so hard not making mistakes and I finally made one here on that, so. According to my um smartphone here, we only have about eight minutes left, so I think we need to go into our closing statements. And as luck would have it, uh we're back to the top again with Drew Chamberlain, who got the first word on the opening statement, so Drew. I guess I'm the leader, huh? Um. You know, public education is broken. It needs to be saved. If we don't fix it at this level, the legislature will fix it, they won't do a very good job. So we need to go back to basic education, we need to fix this problem that we have. We need to eliminate all those distractions, all that controversy. Just get get back to what we do best and that's teaching basic education, reading, writing, arithmetic, science, physics. Let's get back to those things, we have plenty of time, we have plenty of money to do it. And um and fix it, I'm here to do that.
Thank you. Brady Tracy.
I see it as our current education system, it is the Titanic and it's hit the iceberg, it's sinking. And we need to get our kids off and onto the lifeboats. Our our kids are 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 drowning and it's not sustainable at all. And I I have a question for parents to ask their kids. Ask your kids when. And why we celebrate Independence Day and who from do we have independence? And a majority of kids cannot answer you. Because they don't teach stuff like that in schools, they're too busy worrying about their emotions. And finally. I just wanna say that I wanna get stuff done. Um, I I'm tired of people making messes and I'm tired of wanting to fix things. It's time we got to preventing things.
Thank you. Melanie Mordenson.
I am, I. As a parent, as a former teacher, I I believe that both of these perspectives bring so much insight. And help me to be able to reach across the table, help me to be able to communicate. I want to increase transparency from the board, I want to increase parental involvement. Um I feel like these are going to be the keys in helping us move forward and helping us to have greater understanding, greater. Uh accountability and be able to um find ways that we can move forward and that we can progress in fixing the holes that we see in our system. I'm Melanie Mordenson, I'm running for state school board, District Four, and I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Leanne Wood.
So I think, you know, so much of what we talked today um isn't the role of the state school board. And so we need to make sure that when we go, that we're we're really looking at what is our role and what, where can we make the greatest impact? And and I see that as, you know, we create the vision for what public education should look like. We we set the standards, we are that first level of defense against divisive topics, against our kids not being prepared. And so then also regulation, we get to take those laws and then we decide how they're applied, we decide whether or not. Things stay at the state level or or we get local answers. The oversight, every dollar has a string attached to it, no matter what, and we pull that string. And so whether that's a fine fine thread that we let others have that innovation and ability. Or it's a is a heavy rope, we have to be careful with, and then we support, we support teachers, we provide the professional development, the teacher training. And so remember the role and 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 I would love to be a part of that role, again, Leanne Wood, thank you so much.
Thank you. Sam Bracken.
So the last two years have been difficult for everyone, especially our children. The transition from in-person learning to a to a hundred percent online learning was terrible. During the transition, there was little support given to parents, teachers and students. There was imposed policies, procedures and mandates that crippled real learning. The trauma of everything will have a lasting impact on our kids. With all that trauma and change, our kids are behind in school academically and feeling the residual effects of poor transition from lockdowns and mandates. Our kids need protection, our parents need information, our teachers need support. And our Board of Education needs clarity. I'm Sam Bracken, I'm running for the Utah Board of Education, District Four, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Ben Sorenson.
Yeah, so the my platform really, really rests on three things. Proficiency scores, how do we increase proficiency scores? How do we give our kid, how do we enrich the learning um experience of our children in their K through education? How do we make a high school diploma mean something again? Uh number two is is college and career readiness, how do we get our kids, our students, ready for the next steps in their lives? How do we really? Send them a- away from from high school with being ready to enter the workforce or or ready to enter college? Being prepared for that. And number three is accountability and transparency. We are the parents, the school should be accountable to us. Parents should not be accountable to the system, it should be the other way around. Um, I'm Ben Sorenson, uh District Four, Board of Education, I appreciate your support.
Thank you, and I would like to say thank you to all who have participated today, I want to thank again our sponsors for this debate. I want to thank all those viewers who submitted questions, I'm sorry I couldn't get to all of them. Most importantly, I want to thank our six candidates here. Uh thank you for your your answers, thank you for standing up and running for office. And I hope this debate has shed light and helped people who are making decisions. Uh in District Four and the State Board of Education to make those.